There are four board directors present. Christina Martinez is absent due to family matters. So I'm looking for motion to establish the offender.
So move.
Second amendment. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye, students.
Aye.
And board.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two zero four zero. And superintendent report?
I will just hold mine until superintendent announcements, so we can just keep going with our fundamental.
All right. You wanna just take the lead?
Sure.
Or I can.
So fundamental five, here we are. So as a reminder, our elementary team, they are out in front on this one. And then we have our high school team who will be filling in some contextual things. So thanks for being here. And just a reminder, this is kind of the second report that we've really tried to revamp. And when I say we, it's really been Suam who's been really trying to think about and we've been having conversations around reimagining it. So hopefully, it's a second installment and continuing to be more digestible with that. I'm gonna just shift it right over to you, Suam.
Sure. So Andrew is just gonna bring up the report. I think we have one computer for that update, but it'll be over here. Okay, so fundamental five, diversity, inclusiveness, and equity. So if we, I'm not gonna read it to you, but I'm gonna highlight a few things. So if we go down to the third page, we can see that right now we have three thousand nine hundred and forty-two headcount, right, actual kids in the district. And then with the chart, trying to add some graphics to help you digest it a little faster. So anything in blue is a positive increase in in our student population since two thousand eighteen nineteen. Anything in red shows a decrease in student population since two thousand eighteen nineteen. So you can see by this that we're coming a much more diverse population than we were six years ago. And if we keep going down just a little bit, the change over time. So you're used to seeing a chart, which is right below this, but the actual data in it, with what the ethnicity and races of the kindergarteners and first graders coming in and what it is of the eleventh and twelfth graders moving out. But I also tried to put it in graphic form so you could see each year what that is looking like in comparison, the in and out. So you can see that there are more students that are white that are moving out each year and more students with two or more races coming in than that are leaving. All right. So just to help you digest that a little bit more versus having the straight numbers.
And leaving being graduating.
Yeah, yeah, graduating. Yes, thank you. Our ELL data is not here yet. We will update this report when that data comes in. And the same thing with the EES survey. Our high distribution is updated on page five. You can see that we lean a little male than female in our demographics by gender identity. And then as we move through, and I don't wanna read all this to you, but you can look at the proportionality index by gender and one point O is what we're looking for versus one point one, which would be over representation. And anything under one would be under representing, underrepresented.
Do we, a question about race and ethnicity. Do we track percent that identify as first and second generation? Because it seems like there's certain, you know, issues perhaps, you know, particularly with respect to communications, language, you know, the salience and importance of attachment to foreign countries that might be, you know, instructive. And also be sort of interesting to see when we see these, you know, large increases in particular races, you know, Asian American, Latino, how many of those are first and second generation students?
We don't really have a way to do first generational. What we can glean is out of our home language surveys. And then out of those, be, you know, we immediately we connect with any family who's come in that selects a language other than English as a primary language or whatnot, because then we do assessment. And then we can introduce ourselves or we can get to know the family. But there isn't a question on the incoming forms that say, are you first generation? Are you, you know, immigrating here, you know, back to the United States? There's not a question on our state enrollment forms on that. I have to think, I'm trying to think of anything else that we.
The only other data point we would have would be our students with the LEED test, because that would give us an inclination of the home language and if they're.
Because like, I mean, they're both the language component, but there's also that parents may be quite fluent in English, but their background and expectations are in a foreign educational system. And that may inform to a larger extent certain expectations of what education should look like. And in a district like ours, it seems to me that like might be, you know, disproportionately the case compared to maybe adjacent districts. I think we have a lot of parents that had formative, whether it was before college or including college and graduate school in another country. And just, I think there's significant sort of ramifications to that and expectations.
I think that would be interesting if we could gather some of that data just as part of something that we're already doing, like not doing like a special survey or anything like that. It might be, it might be useful just to have, yeah, because, because there are also impacts on kids. Just cultural knowledge that, for example, when there's standardized testing, there are maybe questions where like they don't know what basketball is about, or they don't know. We lived in Shanghai for the first five years of my older kids' elementary education. And when we went to Mercer Island, they were befuddled in math class by all the questions about coins, because they knew Chinese money, they didn't know what a nickel. I'd like drill them at the, you know, kitchen table. I'm like, what's this? They're like, I don't know, it's a little one. So just like, you know, it would be, it would be kind of interesting to have that data if it's gettable.
Yeah, let me, let us get with our student records coordinator, Giovanna. And kind of see what are some entry points for that, as well as our EL coordinators. Because they might have some interesting insights as a starting place and then we can chat.
I will put a caveat on the athletic participation by gender. There wasn't an additional girls' sport this year. There was a mistake when I pulled the data. Accidentally counted a club in there. So we will be fixing that. And then as we looked at our athletics by gender, what we noticed after we had published this on Monday was that last year the spring sports weren't fully pulled on the twenty-two, twenty-three data. So we'll fix that as well. So this year's data is accurate. And it does show a good representation in our sports for both IMS and MIHS. The other change in our data since two thousand twenty is that we were keeping everything by hand and pencil and paper, and we're now electronic. So now our data is a lot more accurate with what we can pull than it was five years ago when we started. Our discipline data.
Well, I'm sorry, I was just going, can you run by once again what explains the significant increase in sort of the high school?
What we realized after we pulled the data and published this report for you is that we did not pull all the spring sports last year. So we carried forward a mistake and we're gonna go back and fix that.
Got it. So we shouldn't do some.
No, no. But we also have the ELL and EES data to put in that's not gathered yet either. So you will see this report again with, with more significant data points. And the same thing with like unified sports, that's happening now and we don't have the full data for that. So it's left blank at the moment.
Doctor, do we just include it all, like the, the sports like the mountain bed team that's exclusively made up of Mercer Island students, but is not like a school team? Or are teams like that that are clubs or is that just a separate?
Yeah, I would say no, this is WI.
Okay.
Maybe you could also recount, for instance, like ballet or those sports under diet.
Our discipline data as well. Not much to report last year because it's all under ten in each cell. So there's not much comparison we can make there. That would be a good thing. And again, the EES data, as soon as it's out, we will put the data in there. Our fine arts enrollment breakdown is on page thirteen. And again, with proportionality data, we're looking at anything over one is over representation and under is under representation.
Sorry, I was supposed to keep it out loud. I need like some blocks in front of it. Yeah, let me see, a lot of holes.
Yeah, and then here is something for us to look at of, you know, what are we actually offering and does it speak to students of different ethnicities and cultures? And so the finer program does review this annually, if not more often.
For radio broadcast, has that been in anywhere since it's now eligible for, I think, fine arts credits? Or that's because maybe like that wasn't always the case that it's not included?
We haven't added that yet. We could add that. It would just change the data up. It hasn't been part of our poll, so we didn't act, we haven't changed what we've been pulling. But, you know, all of this is subject to what you're curious about as a board.
Yeah, but I guess like, at least for my individual purpose, your perspective, like, I mean, any of those that qualify as fine arts credits. I think it would be helpful to see.
Okay, we'll make a note of that.
I'll start kind of a notes for next month's meeting, where we review this and we'll just start a running list of things I want to maybe contemplate.
All right. And then we go into district initiatives. The superintendent has his advisory council that really does embrace diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. I'm not sure if Fred wants to speak to the CIA.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've added students as city members. We have our next meeting coming up next week. And I think that that work continues to evolve. We're gonna have an offshoot, do some work around really getting clear around definitions. You know, what do we mean when we say diversity, equity, and inclusion? And then I'll be bringing that to you all to see, you know, does that influence fundamental five at all or whatnot? But we've got some great work to do.
Okay, great. So then our highlight or spotlight today is on elementary. So I'll turn it over to that.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
So you may recall, we presented our SIPs in November, October, whenever that was. Each of us, each of the elementary schools has a social emotional learning goal as centered around belonging. And really belonging is the heart of the work that we do with our diversity, equity, and inclusion work with our students, really that focus that that ensuring that all students feel connected and a part of their school environment. So tonight, we're gonna kind of present as a collective. Rather than going into specifics, what's happening in one school or another, but a lot of that is outlined in the report. But certainly feel free to ask any questions on those specifics. As I said, we really, the goal is to ensure that all students see themselves in their school and in their learning. And when we talk about what that looks like, it's about them feeling valued and seeing their worth and being connected within the, within our school, with their peers, and importantly, with our staff. A lot, and ways that we attend to that is attentiveness in curriculum adoptions, attentiveness to texts that are available in the classrooms for students to access and see themselves and see their peers in their learning environments. Each of our schools celebrates the very, the histories and cultures of the students in our schools through in-school assemblies and other activities, which may include a focus on Black History Month, Women's History Month, bringing in outside source, community resources like the Daffodil Project and Partnering High School, as well as partnering with community groups. For example, the Center for Holocaust, Holocaust Center for Humanity as a remembrance of the Holocaust. Our PTAs and other community groups are really important in providing those experiences for our students. And I would say the foundation has been supportive in those endeavors as well. We host cultural nights, heritage nights, international nights. I think we all have a different name for it, but it's essentially the same thing. Allowing students to bring their culture, students and their families to bring their cultures into our school as a celebration of who they are and what they bring into, to our school buildings. You know, within our classrooms, lessons are coordinated and curated so that students are able to see, see themselves in the learning as well as for their peers to learn more about who they are and where, what their culture brings. Our libraries are just consistently growing with, with texts that represent us, our students and their families and their cultures. And that's, that's really a fun thing to see. They're, they're highlighted within our schools with, not only just in the library, but highlighted within the library, the various texts and children's books. And we see more and more of a high quality children's literature in those, those areas as well. All of our schools have equity teams that serve several roles within our buildings. A lot of that is about around staff training and staff training may look like guest speakers, virtual PD, article readings, or book studies. But they're also responsible for creating events within our school for our students to participate in and shine. And recent examples that we've been focusing on in some of our schools is the, talking about ableism and what does that mean to be inclusive of all students in our buildings? So, you know, through the work, we're committed to diversity, we're committed to equity and inclusiveness throughout sense of the long for our students. And really proud of the work that we're doing.
So I'm gonna take the second half, but you guys have the questions before I. So I'm gonna talk about social emotional learning and inclusiveness and how we kind of empower our widows and our staff through equity. So all of our classrooms utilize the Second Step curriculum, which when we muck up, sometimes I get to have fabulous conversations with our students and you would be so impressed the third graders, second graders, third graders, the kind of social emotional conversations and repair conversations they can have with each other. I would actually like to bring them to some of my adult friends and, but the language that they have and the skills they have to work with all different, you know, friends, all different classmates is pretty amazing. So Second Step is a huge component of that. We all do PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Framework, and it's focused on safe, respectful, and responsible behaviors. And pretty much everything falls in, in line with all those three. And they participate in lessons and review sort of the positive inclusive behaviors to build connections, but also to be part of a community. There's a lot of kids in those buildings. And so we definitely need to have high expectations and sort of community building. And lots of reminders, especially after this. We do buddy classes, which is really actually true, but one of the highlights that we do in elementary school. The fifth graders and the kindergarteners, some fourth grade classes do it with first graders. And my children who are now in high school and college still remember who their buddies were. And it's really a wonderful sort of experience for all the kids to feel like they're really a Northwood owl, they're really an eagle, they're really a lion, or they're really a wolf. Because they have friends who are older, younger, and everything in between. Are, one of the coolest things we all do is we partner with the high school. And we have the e-car will come down and talk about all sorts of really cool Asian experiences and educational things. We've had the BSU, we've had, if like you drive by Northwood right now, you'll see daffodils because the Holocaust Remembrance team came down and did some instruction and planting. So I always say that I could say something and a teenager could say the exact same thing and they don't believe me, but they believe the teenager. So we love building those connections with the high school and the high school students that come down are so impressive. I mean, it's just like, I think of the dumb dumb I was in high school and our students are just Oh, but I'm Richard, we're sure I'll interject. Anyway, so sorry, I missed. Anyway. And then we have this really cool equity calendar, which is really robust and it has resources, questions, things teachers can use, staff can use for every month of the year and for all various different groups that they can access. And it's a really neat resource. And I believe it was the, we started building it at Island Park and then it's been accessed by all the staff. So it's really a cool sort of a robust resource. And then lastly, like John was saying, we have really powerful equity teams at our schools and it's not a top-down, it's led by staff. And throughout those equity experiences that can be uncomfortable and can push, you know, us in the right direction, we've learned to have hard conversations and really meaningful sort of growth and learning and different practices. So we definitely our equity is sort of centered in inclusion and we have kind of all of the different components.
I was just gonna ask, as we move, you know, and, and are moving towards, you know, full inclusion or as full as possible inclusion, you know, you hear the rumblings about, you know, that, that there are students in class that are disruptive or, you know, if they just had more staff, it would be, you know, more seamless. You know, now that COVID is in the back window and, you know, life is, is more normal for, well, our new normal for these, for our students. How are you seeing, I mean, are you able to accomplish what you want to do with the equity and inclusion with the tools that you have at your disposal? We know you always want more staff.
We want your money.
But realistically, like, do you feel like resources are being put in the right place?
Recently, training staff, you know, like what bucket of resources would help you to?
Well, I, I think I could say that, that almost all of our staff would, would like to have additional PD and training on student behavior and student behavior management. I think that is something that you've seen. You know, I don't, I don't wanna say it's COVID, but we've, we definitely have seen a rise in anxiety and depression and mental health issues with our young students, like the rest of, that's reflected in the rest of our community and communities around the country. And, you know, a lot of us weren't trained in that, right? You know, I've been doing this work for a million years, but maybe not that long, but we didn't, we didn't, we didn't have, we didn't have any of that in our teaching programs, in our administrative programs. And I think that's something, that's an area where we I think we could collectively agree to need additional training and support.
Question about how you think of belonging perhaps differently than inclusion. When I hear inclusion, particularly in the elementary context, I frequently think in this more perhaps simplistic view of just, are you in a classroom or not in a particular classroom? When I think of belonging, particularly at the high school level, it's about sort of ports of entry and, you know, where you feel secure to be yourself. And that doesn't mean that everyone, that's the same space for everyone. In fact, I think there's very much a belief that those are different spaces for different students. So one, you know, question on, you know, how one thinks of inclusion versus belonging, are they the same? Are they different? And then two, on the topic of belonging, how it's going with fifth grade sleepaway camp. I know there's trepidation coming out of the pandemic and part, I think, for behavior issues, but at least in my view, very important for belonging.
I'll start with that one. Danny came on our fifth grade experience last year. You know, we put a lot of work into belonging after, you know, the, a couple of years ago, we focused in on that as our SEL goal. And it's been that a hundred percent of students in our school will feel a sense of belonging, because you can't not have everyone feel that way. And I think, you know, in terms of that effort, it is how do you feel when you walk through the doors in this school? Do you feel joy? Do you feel yourself? Do you feel valued? And that's certainly like an emotion here, whereas inclusion is sort of that, like, how are you interacting with others in the environment? So I do, I can see, I mean, I definitely feel there's a difference there. But the opportunities of which we are, have been able to provide that give students like a get in where you fit in. I, I always love when Nick Wold says that for the high school. It's, it's, it's the same thing at elementary. We wanna provide so many different ways that kids can find what makes them their best self. And maybe it's with a connection with a new friend or a buddy or a club or an experience. Even one experience where is three days in a cabin where you're connecting with kids who you wouldn't have otherwise thought. So yeah, I think the environment is, it's an everyday thing, you know, there's all these activities, like little events and our assemblies we do that students lead. But really, it's a feeling about how, when you go to West Mercer or any of our schools, do you feel like that brings you joy and you get to be you? And it comes across in all of the interactions that our staff have with kids and I think that with one another. And that takes a teachable moment, every moment. And I think our elementary school and likely all of our staff in this district are really, are really good about making everything a teachable moment. In terms of inclusion, I mean, I mean, I think the first thing we think of is special services and how we're creating class structures that are equitable for all kids. But it's really, it's all of the services. And we've moved from that program separate model, you know, a couple of years back. And I like your question, Deborah, like, I'm sitting here thinking, is this the platform to be putting out all my ideas around what we can do. But like, you don't know who's gonna be in front of you year to year. And I think we're always trying to do the absolute best we can and and, and anything can come up. So we will always have to be responsive to needs, because we can't direct kids' behavior every moment. But the more proactive we can be with continuing to make space for social emotional learning as we have been doing and build the skills in our staff. I'm not really answering your question. I'm just sort of rambling now, but essentially. But, you know, yeah, they're words, but they, they come down to like everyday interactions. And I think that's what Fred talked about with the CIA. Like, what does this actually mean for us in the school district? Because these words are being used a lot and we don't wanna lose what that means for, for our community.
You totally answered the question.
You did, you did. And, and it's really helpful. And you know, I mean, we really try and steer clear of operations, but you know, when we're monitoring the budget and monitoring the superintendent and hearing that, you know, that, that's certainly not the first time I've heard about staff wanting more support with regards to the behaviors. And, you know, so that is PD or is that a curriculum? I mean, do we need to start looking at curriculum changes? It's not like we're gonna be direct. I mean, we could be directing superintendent to say, hey, go and study that. But but it's important for us to see the big pictures and in terms of how we, you know, set our policies and that's the work that we do. So you know, I mean, it's, do we, do we, do we direct our, our superintendent to spend money on instructional coaches, new curriculum? You know, these types of things that are gonna support our staff? Or do we need to put it elsewhere? You know, so those are, so it's, and it's important to know, it's really important to know from, you know, the boots on the ground, what's actually happening in the classroom. And, and, you know, we're all joking aside, of course, we will all want more parents. We know that, you know, inclusive practices is the most successful when you have the support that you need for all students. And, you know, this for learning and behavior and everything. You know, when we always try and do the, we, we were talking about in funds today, in fact. So, you know, meeting with, with candidates who are running for elected offices in the state that are gonna be making these decisions and it's establishing those relationships. And you know, for us to know when we go do that is to say, hey, our staff needs professional development. If we can train our staff to be, you know, our mental health first responders, who just, just because someone has a TT degree does not mean they have the skills they need in order to be that mental health first responder. You know, because we know, anyways, you see the circle. So that's what it's all, you know, we're all here, we're all a piece of the puzzle and, and hearing what's working and what's not working. And it's just important to hear what's working as it is to hear what's not working.
And just to add some kind of perceptual texture, and this is just in and we're just going through.
just in, and we're just going through the EES data. As you can see, we didn't even have time to put it into the report, but kind of to, to back up this conversation, the question, and this is all district and this is our staff. I understand instructional strategies to support social emotional learning objectives. While up five percent since last year, it's still only eighty-one percent who are reporting that being always true or almost always true. So we've got twenty percent. And then you say our district has a social emotional framework that is up twelve percent over the last two years, but it's still at sixty-nine percent. So understanding not only, um, that I have strategies, but are they supporting something else? And, you know, and granted, this is K, this is all, all of our staff, um, which is a little, um, different on that one. Is this a safe, were you gonna talk about belonging with high school data or no?
Oh, we can. We were so proud of it.
It would fit into the year. What I think the conversations we were having would fit into this, and surround what you've been doing, especially as Director Glosz has talked, you know, his question was.
Frank, can I just jump in before we kind of wrap up on the elementary discussion? I just had a really interesting experience of kind of like coming back into the district as like a new parent because my youngest has been out of school, uh, out of in-person school for the last year. She's been in online school and, um, we, because of family travel and stuff. And so she is now a, a West Mercer. It's been actually fascinating because that's a school that's new to me. And, and she went in there on Tuesday, her first day, like as a hoodie wearing introverted, non-talking kid. And every day when I pick her up, she's been like beaming and like the hoodies off and like, she's like, the kids are so friendly. Cause the kids at her previous elementary school on the island she grew up with, she knew them all from preschool, right? So these are kids she doesn't know. And she's like, every day she's like, all these kids keep coming up and wanting to talk to me. It's so weird. And so COVID, you're a kid, right? She's like, it's so weird. Like, why would they want to talk to me? She's like, they're like, all like, oh, you're new. What's your name? Like, do you like animals? And kids are inviting her to play and, and like on the playground, which is fantastic. So, so, you know, you guys are really like walking the walk. So thank you for creating such a welcoming environment. Like, so that's the belonging piece. And then the inclusion piece is she's actually kind of falling behind on her academics, you know, because of online school being like an hour a day. Um, and so she's, you know, she's getting tested, she's getting like, they're figuring out like the best way to accommodate kind of what she needs right now and how to catch up. But she's already able to participate fully in classroom activities and classroom, like even though she doesn't know some of the stuff that the other kids know. So to me, that's just like a really great illustration of like both the belonging piece and the inclusion piece. So thank you for that. Okay, sorry. That was my little add-on.
Yeah, that was awesome. Uh, so the belonging data, we, uh, as Fred said, the EES data is just fresh off the press. So we were looking at it and we were celebrating one of the sections, uh, for the, you know, nine characteristics of high functioning schools is belonging and identity. And, um, we have just had growth in all areas. And, uh, this report is really around equity. And so the school has affected ac- equity practices for all. We had an increase of eight percent. Uh, and over the last, uh, few years, you know, we've gone from seventies to seventy-eight percent. But just in all areas, I'm feeling good about culture, mind, culture and ethnic background. Um, I have an adult in the school that I can talk with. Um, and I'm feeling proud of my school. I have a trusted adult who knows and cares about me. Like, we're just growing in all of those areas. And so that was just, uh, really nice to see. That is truly, we believe that relationships is really the foundation for the learning and that's gonna focus for us. So that all students have that sense of belonging, as we're saying, uh, cause that just really wraps up all three of these themes. Is that students really feel like I belong here. So, um, and I love that even about our signs. You belong here, right? Come enroll today. You belong here. So, it's exciting.
And was there anything else that on the elementary side that you also wanted to share or if that's a piece of the presentation? All right, more questions, super discussion.
Yeah, all right. Well, hopefully, find them on five. The new format is digestible and we still have ideas on how to even make it better.
I love it. It's super digestible. I did have a question, actually. If you go back to the second or third page that has the, um, the chart, the colorful stat charts. The one that shows the kind of racial breakdown, it's, uh, page three. Three slash ethnicity change over time. Um, I'm still curious, I kind of mention this every time, I'm still curious to know about the two or more races category, if there is some way, not at this moment, but at some point, if we could find out whether those kids also belong to a category that we're counting here, such as Hispanic, Latino or Asian.
So they choose two or more races on the form, I believe.
So they're not filling out another.
They're not filling out two things and they're going, oh, they filled out two, so they're here.
Right.
There's not a secondary question on the federal category. It's only on the state categories, but what, what's interesting on that is they don't, they get to just identify everything that how they identify as a family, which could be five different ways.
Yeah, right. So there's no easy way to find that. Okay. My, my, my gut and just of all the kids I know, my gut is telling me that a bunch of those are, are Asian Americans that are not getting counted otherwise, which is only relevant in the sense of like, if we're trying to like be culturally responsive to, you know, what our kids' families, like where they're coming from, you know, culturally speaking, like Chinese New Year, I think, you know, Lunar New Year, things like that. If there's actually, you know, right now, we're about like twenty-four percent, twenty-five percent Asian, but maybe we're really thirty percent, we just don't even know it. So just in the future, if it ever becomes possible to count them, I would be curious. As a mixed race person, I thought.
Just, you know, and I chose with a, a couple people, when you do look at all the state choices, um, as you can see, we have three thousand nine hundred forty-two students. They identified eight thousand five hundred forty-three different ways in terms of their identities.
It's almost impossible, but so. I mean, because you could say everyone gets to answer two, right? Like, what are the ethnicities of their parents or the races of their parents? But then what if their parent is two or more?
No, like I get a lot of forms all the time that ask, are you like, you know, you could check more than one, like, or you could check up, check up to two and one of them is two or more racist. So you can check two or more racist Asian.
Like a drop down, like two more than one.
Right, right, right. Yeah. Are we, like, can we collect more data than what the state form requires? Or is that, will that really confuse things if we're?
We can always collect more. I mean, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we could.
We have to report it to the state in a particular way, but it doesn't mean we can't collect it.
Exactly. So we can talk to Giovanna. If, if someone were to collect or click two or more races, there can be a sub, subcategory underneath it. What the federal categories, you know, what it really limits is as soon as you click one, that's it. So if you click Asian, that's all you get to do. So, you know, that, it is limiting and that's why the state ones are so much better. Maybe we'll talk to, uh, our friends in AP, uh, site, because they're always looking for, uh, statistics projects, right? There's so many more duties. We have full analysis.
You love a statistical mind, dude.
So what I'm hearing is like, we shouldn't do what our family had, had done, which is switch every year. I would support the kids. White Asian, white Asian, but that's probably not the most statistically beneficial. All right, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Um, this is a
Action item.
So I need, um, motion to find these two in compliance with board calls eighteen hundred OE one fundamental five. So any further discussion?
It's called data.
I like your hat.
Oh, thank you. Anybody want some West wine? Come by. I'll, I'll have an actual for you. Yeah, it is. Come by, Dan. Come by.
Um, all in favor of finding the superintendent in compliance, uh, indicate by saying aye, students? And board? Any opposed? Uh, so two zero five zero, four zero. Uh, super, thank you. Superintendent is in compliance of fundamental five. Um, moving on to board policy eighteen hundred OE seven, financial administration. So level one.
Great. Um, so we don't have, uh, full reports on a level one, um, but, um, we have gone through. I'll go ahead and let Director Sullivan in. If you want to comment on any of the items and we can bring up, um, the report, um, as it stands. So.
Uh, OE seven is in respect to ongoing administration of district's financial resources. Specifically, superintendent will take responsible measures to prevent material deviation from the budget policy adopted by the board of directors. Calls or allow any fiscal condition that is inconsistent with the values, vision, admission, state or board policy or places the long-term financial health district in jeopardy. In relation to this, uh, items one to, one through ten excluding item or number five, we find to be in compliance. Uh, item five is maintain annual budget reserves of at least eight percent with a target of ten percent for the prior fiscal year ended as of August thirty-first. That they're adequate to be consistent with best financial practices for public school districts. And we have found, uh, this one to be not in compliance.
Question on the interpretations, that new or is that always?
It's always been there. For as long as I think.
Well, yeah, the overarching interpretation of OE seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, number five.
Oh, yeah, that's all, that's, uh, well, that was put in there, uh, probably two or three boards ago. Was that your, was, was that your first term?
I don't, I turn, number five was put in probably about four years ago or five years ago. Um, I think your question though is about the reason.
Yeah, the reason, well, my question is about the reasonable interpretation because, I mean, I think there's a component that's directed at bonds. But there's certainly, like, that's not exclusively the reason, at least in my view, for having a reserve. Um, so the interpretation makes it seem perhaps by implication that that's the only reason for the budget reserve.
I, I think that's a reasonable point. I mean, I, I think as we, as we hear more and more from the experts about, um, interest rate on bonds, knowing that like we will never achieve a triple A rating again because they expect like, what, fifteen percent?
Twenty-five percent.
Oh, there you go. Which is never gonna happen. Um, at least unless there's like a crazy change in public school funding for Washington State, which although my breath on that too, but, but, you know, there are other, lots of other reasons. I mean, you, you know, the interest is having two months of payroll and on hand or, you know, the, the rainy pay fund, however, that should be said, um, I, I assume.
Yeah, that's where I'm going with that. Yeah, that's where I'm going. There's. So why don't I, um, why don't we, I'm gonna, just like I'm gonna keep in notes on, um, some things to make sure that we're catching. So for the May ninth meeting, uh, in addition to wanting to do some, maybe some conversation around fine arts and expanding what we're including on fundamental five, during the language change, we can take up item five, um, and have that discussion. And if anyone has updates or things that you want to send to me ahead of time, as far as language proposals, great. If you want to bring them to the meeting, we can finesse it during the meeting too.
Yeah, that works.
I, uh, I just want to comment that, um, you know, I obviously agree that, that number five is not in compliance at this time as we are hopefully approaching five percent, um, getting closer and closer and, and with the expectation that we are gonna be at or right around five percent by the end of the fiscal year. Um, I just want to commend the, uh, administration on, on the, uh, the reports, keeping the board up to date, um, and the hard work that's gone into making sure that we are, um, using our funds in the most responsible and appropriate way in terms of if it's a, if it's a capital use, then it comes from the cap tech. If it's a technology use, whether it's, you know, to pay a technology person or runs our technology or, um, actual technology physically, um, that it's coming from the cap tech that frees up our general fund for other purposes that we're not allowed to use those monies for. So, um, I know that has helped significantly and it's been a lot of work. And also, um, just to highlight, even though I don't know that it's actually mentioned in here, but, um, it probably is, uh, the one point five million, um, that is going back to taxpayers from, from, uh, refinancing the bonds, um, that the community was notified that it happened officially this week. Um, you know, that, that comes with a lot of work and time, um, on the part of our staff. So I just, I want to, uh, express appreciation for all of that. Did I take away?
No, no, I was giving it my, um, just it's a lot of back and forth work, paperwork.
Imagine, imagine refinancing your home every single year with a lot bigger budget. So, um, it's a lot of work. So thank you for all of that. It, it has served us all well. Um, any other questions or comments on this one? OE seven. Looking for a motion to find the superintendent in compliance of OE seven.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye, uh, students? Aye. And board?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Um, that's our two zero four zero. Thank you. Moving on, I'm just watching the time here. Uh, board policy eighteen hundred OE eleven facilities and capital assets is also a level one.
Great. Um, I will kick it over to Director Sullivan as well, but just a quick update that our, both of our teams officially started this week uh, with, uh, Malon and Methune. Uh, they held, they're kind of the, the guiding team meetings for both schools this week. They've been meeting with students, um, before spring break. And then, um, I think Malon was at the high school today, um, as a matter of fact. So the work is underway. They're rolling along, so.
Uh, OE eleven, OE eleven, just facilities and capital assets, uh, specifically the superintendent personally will ensure that physical, our physical facilities and capital assets support the accomplishments of board policy zero, 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 one and are safe and are properly built, renovated, maintained. Uh, numbers for items one through eight, we found to be in compliance across the board.
Any questions or comments?
Um, just one comment. This might also be something for language review in May. Um, when it comes to one D, uh, which present the manual due by the blog, did it fix laundering facilities, plan inclusive of updates regarding? And three is enrollment, um, given a demographic change as well as open enrollment uh, and the effect that that will have on utilization capacity. Um, I think there is a new stinking group of what updates will, will look like to take into account, uh, what may be.
One D, correct?
Yeah, one in particular, I guess. Maybe all of it. I mean, the one D three, then how applies the.
Any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion to find the superintendent in compliance of OE eleven.
So moved.
Second. Um, all in favor indicate by saying aye, students? Aye. And board?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two zero four zero. Uh, moving right along. Uh, board policy one thousand nine, board members code of conduct. It's a level one. Um, I guess all talk about this one, right?
Yeah, you can start it off and you can either, um, sometimes you've gone one by one or board members have talked about it and then you vote all together, however you'd like it.
Gotcha. Um, so this is board members code of conduct. The board commits itself and its members to ethical, professional and lawful conduct, including proper use of authority and appropriate decor when acting as board members. Is there an interest in reading all of these out loud or does anyone have any specific comments on any of them? Comments, concerns, questions?
I just, we're doing much better this year. That's my final comment.
I agree. I was just gonna say, I think, um, you know, I think with, with our new board, uh, directors, the, um, coming in and the, uh, interest in learning and, um, you know, gaining knowledge from, from both, you know, current board members, our administration as well as community members, um, has just truly benefited the functioning of the board. I think that.
I think that, um, the, uh, work that we did in January with the coach mentor, um, that Dr. Rondo brought in, um, this really set us up to, um, build on our our relationships. And I think as we've, you know, hit some more challenging issues, having those relationships, the strength of those relationships to fall back on, I think really helped us, um, get through some challenging topics. And I think that that's, um, very much the purpose of it and, and I feel like it really did, um, really did make a difference. And, um, so I agree.
Yeah, I, I think the only thing that I would add is, and perhaps it's something that we can discuss um, in greater length when we look at a language for board policy one thousand five, is the interplay between, um, and they're, they're overlapping, but a little bit distinct. Um, interactions amongst the board and then sort of expectations about how board members interact, uh, with the public. And I think some of the perhaps confusion, uh, may originate from model laws, the policy, um, which tends to be limiting in the acknowledgement of the role that public officials play outside the boardroom, um, which I think if one just removes, the school board director had her moment and thinks of analogous political leaders at the local and regional level, we know that that's obviously not true. Um, that you're free as an elected politician and I would argue have a duty and obligation uh, to engage with the community, um, wearing your individual hat. And just being clear, and I think in a community like ours that's quite educated, um, understands when one is talking about a decision that has been made by the board um, and when one is talking about a position, uh, that one feels one way or another as an individual director. But again, something that we can talk about, I think in greater length in one thousand five, other than that there is some interplay with one thousand ten here.
Yes, and we need to make sure that we hit up that. Um, we got really busy, but we need to make sure that's on the agenda.
It's penciled for November, or November, not May ninth.
Okay.
Uh, and then we'll, we'll talk about it.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of, I'm sorry. Looking for a motion to find the board in compliance of board policy one thousand nine, board members code of conduct.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye, students?
Aye.
And board?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two zero four zero. Um. Moving on to board policy one thousand ten, board member conflicts of interest. Uh, this is to preserve the integrity of the educational environment and public agency process, board members must avoid actual and potential conflicts of interest. Conflict of interest exists when a board member encounters an issue that compromises the board member's ability to objectively fulfill the board member's duties and responsibilities to the district and its students. Um, any comments, questions?
I guess a general comment that, um, for conflict of interest, um, I think as it's written, it, it, it is mainly focused on financial conflicts of interest and I think conflicts could get a little bit broader. Um, there can be challenges with writing an ethics code. I think the city, um, has a different one, which at least my understanding is we're not subject to the city code, uh, under the definition of officials that the city has chosen to adopt. And I know we suggested that's a perfect model, it's just a different model. Um, but perhaps at, at some point, and I don't think in my view, like in the near future, um, but it might be worthwhile to compare, um, particularly because we do have, we're roughly, you know, the same budget as the city, but we, you know, both two sets of elective officials that are working under two separate ethical codes, um, which, you know, just strikes me as, you know, is there a reason for that? Um, you know, should we perhaps just, you know, sign off to the city, should they sign on to ours? Uh, but something for the future to just put on the radar.
Yeah, I think that's a legitimate discussion to have. I mean, like, like, I don't know, I, I have a city who's been spent a while, but I don't know that we need to adopt their exact code, but, but I can imagine a scenario where like, with like three members of the board were like on, you know, the orchestra boosters board. And we were like, hey, the district's entire budget should go to the orchestra program. Like, that would be a conflict of interest, you know, we know it's not a financial interest, but that's not really covered. Like, we're under, under this, under this policy, that would be totally fine.
Yeah, no, exactly. I think there's some.
It kind of is when you're talking about a personal interest in any matter, any board, but, you know, I mean, as, as I, I hear you, I think it's, you know, I, I mean, I think conflict of interest discussions are always important to have, um, as we all kind of interpret them in different ways and, and, and I think that's across the board, right? I mean, all the way up to the Supreme Court. So, um, yeah, I just, uh, thinking about. I'm wondering if, um, this would be, if we say yes, we could put it on sometime to discuss, the odds of it actually happening, I think are slim. And, and that's why, that's my hesitation here is, is I don't want to do that. Um, I think that if we are serious about it and, and by all means, that we should create a committee of two or one to take a look at it, to then bring something to the board, um, once that is done. Now, that's not always, um, doesn't mean it, you know, we're all really busy. Um, but, but I think that's probably more likely a way for us to address that. Um, do you guys want to have some time to think about that and we can discuss it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Do you want to do that now?
I mean, I, I, I would be happy to work alone or with someone else, would, you know, can just contact me after the meeting. Um, to just, in particular, I think for procedure, that if there are elements to sort of formalize disclosure as well as just a determination that there isn't a conflict of interest, um, that's a little bit more robust, uh, than we currently have.
Mm-hmm.
I don't personally have the bandwidth to do it, but I have no problem with going off and, and coming up with proposals on it. And if I could, I think it would be helpful, especially if you're not coming onto a board and being like, if I'm also on the fundraising board for youth and family services, I'm also on the fundraising board. You know, and right now we don't do that. Well, I can't do that. But, um.
But you know, I mean, I asked you to, I ran it off spread, but like, it would be nice to have something where it's like, oh yeah, that's fine or that's, you know, I should, I need to like heads up someone or whatever, right? And that would be very useful then.
Yeah, no, I agree. And, um, you know, I mean, I tend, my, my personal policy is I over report those things and a lot of people don't. And so it's, you know, I mean, ha- having an agreed upon policy in terms of what we disclose and what we don't. Um, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Can you kind of capture this a little bit, put it into my weekly updates or Christina's?
Oh, yeah.
I can just put it in there and then.
I was actually gonna say when Christina's back, we could bomb your. Um, no, but yeah, that would be great. Perfect. Um.
On a related note, I hope everyone got their PBC disclosure form filed because it's a paper.
See, and that's where my full disclosure I did it. Um, anyways, it is not the easiest system to deal with. Uh, all right. So looking for a motion to find the board in compliance of board policy one thousand ten, board member conflict of interest.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye, students?
Aye.
And board?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two zero four zero. Nice job, gang. Um, five fifty-nine.
Look at you, you're really, look at that.
Nice. Um, we are getting to recognition. Um, I know we have people around, so I'll just kind of, um, oh, should we grab, oh, we need to, okay, let's take a super quick one minute re, uh, room readjustment.
I forgot this is like this next, this is this is. That would be what I hate for my like, what I went to those more, I had jeans and I had a hummus and I had. Maybe I.
One public input for today, we have, um, I, I guess I should read it even though I don't really mean to. A meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It's not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. When addressing the board at the public meeting, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Point a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern and if desired, provide written documentation with the board secretary of public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of the student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the student superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed. Um, so the public comment we have is Stephanie John Lewis and friends, and I promise that I would not limit this to our typical three minutes because we make those exceptions for our students. So, um, come on up and, uh, share with us what has been happening, please. So as you can see them all come up with all of this beautiful hats and scarves and critters. So anybody want to say what we have been doing in class?
We have been crocheting and knitting.
So, um, when I was in an STLA meeting a while back ago, I said, we're struggling because I cannot find any adults to help us knit. Dr. Booby's daughter showed up and taught us, um, some knitting strategies and then she came in and they have bought all of these. Hold up your chick. We have this snake over here. We have an octopus. And purchase all of these supplies for our students to make them. And has it been fun?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's been the best part about it.
Learning something new.
So there's a huge, huge gratitude and thank you to Dr. Booby and her daughter for 24 students. I got to make these. I wanted to. Some of them decided that it was a bit too much for them. Um, we have knit or crochet? I mean loom. A loom hat, actually hand knitting. This is a loom. We got some knitting going on. This child here has, um, everything that you can think of. She's got a hat that she just finished today, um, headbands, scarves, and something which has been mostly all knitting and some looming. And we have a loom. This is what a loom looks like. And we have a crocheted snake. And we just, I just wanted to share a couple of comments, um, that parents have given back to us. Um, knitting has been very fun. I love learning something new and inspired me to try new things. Now we are crocheting and I can't wait to make my animal. My son fell in love with knitting and looming for a child with ADHD, which has been a therapeutic way for him to calm his mind and just do with his hands. This has given him so much confidence and he has even been commissioned by friends and family to make things. It's super fun. I love to share the project scars and blankets that I create. Knitting is relaxing and I enjoy learning a new skill with my friends and kids from other classes. She recommends it to everyone. And all of this was brought on by Anne Woodford, who is, um, a pair pro at Island Park. This is her first full year. And she is an artist by trade and she is a knitter. And she was in class knitting one day, um, while we're at recess. And I was like, what's she doing? What's she doing? And then we got, let's knit. And she has been inspirational as well to help teach the kids how to knit, to put, where's your pom poms?
Oh, no.
Oh, whoops. Took pom poms, um, and helped make that into a hat. And her comment was, art offers a way to create and expand your imagination in different ways. So many of these COVID kids have screen time ingrained in their daily routine, so they have not yet figured out ways to distress. Knitting and crocheting, while it can be challenging to learn at first, have given you the kids a way to relax and take pride in creating. It also improves fine motor skills. We have loved watching them create, choosing their color and their patterns. But each thing you can shout out to Mrs. Woodford. Anybody? Want to shout out? You want to say something?
So it's really fun knitting and learning and it's really easy to learn and I've been, I'm going to be able to try.
You better.
Um, well, sometimes when I'm thinking I'm just kind of bored, then I, um, um, then I start crocheting and knitting and it's, um, really fun. It's like, it's a nice activity to do, but it doesn't like take up all of your time.
That's another workout check.
And this is, this is something about my sister. She started crocheting before I even learned at Island Park. And, um,
When I was on the airplane over spring break, I made a bunch of rectangles and handed them out to the flight attendants.
It's a funny screen on it and it's, and it's really in place.
Well, thank you for letting us come and present to you and share what we have been doing. It's really exciting. And when they come in at recess, um, last week, that's the day is their choice. And they bring in other friends and they have been teaching the other class how to knit and crochet as well. Thank you for taking us to come in. Thank you all for coming. You ready? Hold them up. You ready? Come on over this right now.
Would you like some stars? Do you like some golden?
Oh, God. Three, three on me. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Any parents? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much. There is no additional public input and we are moving to recognitions.
Great. Um, before Dr. Booby heads off this evening, because I know she wanted to be here for our, uh, group there. Um, obviously you saw, um, and I had been kind of giving you a heads up that, uh, uh, Dr. Booby and I have been talking for some, uh, you know, for a little while now and uh, we are grateful that we had five years and obviously she sent out her message to the community announcing her resignation as the director of special services. Um, I feel grateful we had five years, um, because, um, if you've seen the trajectory of Dr. Booby, she, um, has a lot of passions for projects and she likes to see things, um, come to completion and then move on to new journeys. And she's got some new things in the hopper. Um, she'll be doing some state work with OSPI. Other districts, um, know about her work. And they've been trying to steal her for several years now and, uh, I've managed to keep them at bay at least for a bit, but, uh, it's time for her to be able to do some other things. The great thing is we're going to retain, uh, Dr. Booby for a part-time contract to do transition work with us. And we've got some projects that are near and dear to her that haven't quite been completed, but I just wanted to recognize her uh, five great years and, uh, getting us through some challenging times, uh, with COVID, but never letting that keep us from getting better. Just thank you so much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. And we have, let's start with our Pegasus, uh, group. If you want to come up, uh, Ms. Thompson. Uh, we have two of our students here. Um, why don't I just turn it directly over to you? Have you talked about the word? We have three students to, um, recognize, but we've got two here this evening.
Yeah, uh, earlier this year, um, actually last year, December, um, the Scholastic Young Writers Competition had a submission deadline. And I encouraged all of my students to submit, um, Pegasus staff and students in my creative writing class. And three of them, Fern Frame, um, Tiger Yan, and Madison Lu, uh, all submitted and were given awards at the regional level. Um, Tiger and Fern received honorable mentions, Tiger for a play, um, title.
Love is a Thinker.
Love is a Thinker. Um, so we're in a drama category, received an honorable mention at the regional level. And, um, Fern Frame received, uh, an honorable mention for creative nonfiction for, um, her poem Innocence. And Madison received a Golden Key Award, which is, um, uh, higher level of recognition for the piece, um, Conversation.
Certain Things Spoken.
Certain Things Spoken. I know we talked about the title a few times. Um, and so Madison's piece will be automatically advanced to the national competition in New York, uh, in another few weeks for judging. Um, and so, you know, it's just more sort of evidence and recognition that, um, creative writing and creative artists are alive and well and doing really great in, um, this district. So if you have anything to add, young people? Do I have anything?
Yeah, I'm sure. Um, I'm very thankful to the school board and the school in general for recognizing Pegasus and, um, what it's continued to. I'm technically not a current Pegasus student. I took the class in my sophomore year, um, but I am a senior staff member. Um, so yeah, I'm very excited.
Yeah, the magazine is a collaboration between the students in the class and the students in the club and it's fairly seamless. Um, but it works really well and I am super proud of these students. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. You want to do them separately with the board or with, with other groups? Take off the?
Yeah.
We can do the photo now.
See all faces back up a little bit, sort of like a half circle. You're all in a half circle. On me in three, two, one. Three, two, one.
You gotta say it together.
Next on our recipients, we are going to hold off on journalism in Europe, correct Ian? We're going to hold off, um, so that more than a 10. So we're going to go to our KMIH 889, The Bridge, as well as MIHS TV. So why don't students come on up? Why don't we do, let's do the radio. Let's do KMIH, uh, first, 889, The Bridge. You want to come on up here? And then, uh, Mr. Brian, I've seen you there. I think I saw Ms. Woods in the, in there. Come on up. Um, our, our radio, um, students continue to find voice. Um, I was at a conference recently and a superintendent in our area, um, who I would say their radio station is in a similar place to where ours was, um, not that long ago. And we had a transition and I can remember, uh, then Principal Pockets, uh, and myself just trying to contact anyone and everyone to find someone who had passion because I know that, um, you know, a lot of our programs and, and flourishing activities, they start with passionate people and educators. And we were fortunate to, um, find Joe and, and, uh, he brought along Natalie as well. Um, and what continues to amaze me about the students is, um, year after year, um, there's, they're receiving awards, yes, yes, but it's their voice that comes through. And we've talked a lot about celebrating student voice and elevating it. And when I've talked to other superintendents, when they say, you know, we see this stuff about your radio vote, you know, radio doesn't seem like it's as prominent. And I say, it's more than radio. It is podcasting. It is providing voice. It is, um, having students be able to interact and meet incredible people and, um, do some wonderful things. So, um, thanks for being here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to you, Joe, to talk more about the students and then give the students a chance to talk about your accomplishments.
Okay. Well, I, I definitely want to let them do the talking because I do my share and once I get started, I may not stop. But I want to, I want to say I'm so proud of, of these guys and, and Natalie and Michael Ketchum, who's going to come up here in a second. Between the three of us, really building something very special, uh, as far as a media program goes. And, uh, we're so blessed to have the resources that come from the school board. I think we are going to have to request a couple more trophy cases in the next month, yeah, because to put our stuff in. But I'd, I'd like these guys to talk about their, their awards and what they did because they're all really special and great. If you want to start.
Uh, so, uh, my podcast partner Luke and I won three awards. Um, we talked about the Seattle homeless crisis. We talked about a local problem and we also talked about, um, a senator making computer science a requirement, hopefully for high school students in Washington. Um, and I think that as people who have such a great platform, we do have a responsibility to talk about these issues. So I'm glad we got recognized and thank you for having us here.
Yeah, we absolutely, the radio program gave us the opportunity, gave us a lot of resources. We got to talk to a lot of really interesting people like city council, uh, council members, state senators and so on. And, um, I don't think that would have been possible without this program.
Um, I won an award for best student station manager and I really, the only reason that I got to that point, that I was a student station manager was because of Joe and Natalie. Um, they do such a great job of lifting their students and encouraging them to try new things. And as Dr. Rendell was saying, giving us a voice and giving us the opportunity to express how we feel, talk about the things we want to talk about. And they do such an amazing job of encouraging us to do that and helping us find new ways and find new topics and really go down whatever path we want. And so I was with their guidance, able to find a leadership position within the radio station and got recognized for it, which was really cool. And yeah, it's just a great program and I'll always brag about it whenever I can.
Um, I won something for a news feature story about the Hollywood strikes that happened a couple of months ago. And I'm just super grateful that I'm able to interview such cool people, um, because there's so many cool people, not only in our community, but also outside our community. And Radio just kind of gives you the opportunity to kind of just like call email and just reach out and see what you can get back. And I was able to, I don't know, interview like a film producer and it, there's just like so many cool opportunities that Radio gives you. So I'm super thankful for Radio and thank you for having us in the recognition.
Um, I won runner up for best documentary at IBS and my story is about, um, the creation of the Space Needle and how like my great, um, grandparents had a part into it. And so I think what I've found is I've been able to share cool stories like from my family or like the people in the community around me, um, and have been able to spread that to like a national level. Just really cool.
And introduce yourself. Haley, you didn't introduce yourself.
Sorry. Um, I'm Haley. Is that what I said? Oh, I'm Haley and I'm a junior.
And I'm always, and I'm a senior.
You didn't win runner up, you won.
Oh.
You won runner up in the New York Times last year. That was for a whole year ago. It was about skiing and her great grandpa invented skiing basically in the Northwest and she got runner up to the New York Times. But you won this one. You were the grandpa.
I, I mean, I submitted it like not thinking it would even get nominated. So it's cool to, um, see it to key places that you wouldn't think you would ever go. Yeah.
Uh, I'm Nova. I'm sophomore.
And I'm Will. I'm sophomore as well. We do a tandem radio show called What Happened. It's not really a show to feature. It's called What Happened Today in History? And we just kind of highlight, um, things that big events that happened in history, uh, just as small segments. We usually around one minute, 15 seconds to two minutes. Um, and I usually voice the shows. Um, I do all the talking, but I could not have done anything. I could not have gotten as far as I did winning a national award without my editor. Cause I hate editing, to be honest. Um, I just find it time consuming and I never really got the knack for it. But edit, uh, Nova over here loves it and she finds it really fun to do. So, uh, we just work great. Um, and we just have a bunch of writing jokes and we have like a really nice relationships to make it, um, easier, less of a, less of a, um, actual radio class. Less of a school class, more of like a fun hobby thing that would willingly spend my time outside of school doing, um, because we both love doing it and it's just so fun to do with each other.
Well, I mean, listen to the, all the accomplishments. It's such a pleasure. Joe and I just have a, a great time every day. It's so wonderful to take my broadcast skills and to impart them on such talented students and the, the breadth and the depth of the, the coverage and the reporting that they're doing for everything from politics to homelessness in Seattle. You know, documentaries, interviews, leadership and, you know, feature segments. It's just covering the whole kind of scope of broadcasting and journalism and, um, it just speaks to what talent our students have.
Well, no, you guys be in front.
There we go. Everyone on me. I can see everyone's face. All right, on me. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Right. Your parents keep scratching.
Three, two, one. And lastly, let's bring up our MIHS TV group. So as quickly as our radio station kind of ascended and really started, um, uh, you know, making waves literally, uh, we've also launched obviously, um, a TV station. And in just one year, uh, we're in year, really year two. Um, we already have, you know, golden microphone awards and, and now we have other awards. And I want to begin again, that oftentimes it's an adult who's wanting to make a difference in the lives of kids. And we were fortunate enough to get Mr. Michael Ketchum, um, pretty much out of industry, um, to come over and join our school district. And he's made such an impact that you can see that he won the best advisor for TV, um, and at the, I mean, as a national award. And I think that speaks to, um, you know, that you don't have to be doing it a long time to be able to make a difference and, and set kids up for success. So Ketch, congratulations to, to you on that. And while I give you talk about, uh, the team of students here in front of us today.
Well, it's been fun. I mean, it was probably like 30 years ago. I wanted to be a teacher. Somebody probably know it didn't pay very well. So I followed industry here, engineering and through restaurant owner and stuff, but finally because of Jetta Clowen, I got an opportunity to come back or come to teaching and started off last year with just the media tech class. And that first year we won two telly awards and that's a national and we went to silver and a bronze. And that was against just colleges and, uh, professional studios. And so two of our students won the studio and I just won the silver and bronze. This year, uh, the tellies aren't out yet. I'm hopeful. I want to tell you that we'll get some more tellies again this year. Come out in June. This year, uh, Joe's kind of urging and Natalie's just re-entered IBS for a number of things. We won the best newscast in the nation with The Current. And, um, mostly people, everybody here was involved with that version of The Current and, uh, just some, some great kids. They're a lot of fun. Uh, it's like the inmates run the asylum, definitely. They're, they're all, I mean, each of them has their talents that's definitely a clutch of having them in the class. And I'll let them tell you what they did and what they liked. Go, Grace.
Well, I think the media tech class is really fun. We do really fun segments, like on Late Start on Wednesdays. We did a segment where we stood outside the main door and we caught every student who came in late. And we interviewed them. Uh, we did a fun one where we tried all the different Starbucks drinks that were lavender flavored. Um, that was pretty messy, but all through really fun. So I think it's just a great creative outlet and it's so accessible to students and I've just had so much fun.
Yeah. Going off of what Grace said, we get a lot of, um, creative control. So we all have like our own segments, um, that we create. And it's a lot of fun. So I have my segment, Ask a Snail, where I go around and ask, um, our science nails what their ideas are and their answers to some fun questions. Um, I mean, But yeah, we have a lot of fun. Um, we recently did a project for the 90 second film festival. Um, Carter, Grace and I created like a 90 second film about the college waiting game and how waiting for colleges is a real struggle, um, and how it's ongoing. So, yeah.
Well, I mean, I personally had a big
Well, I mean, I personally had a big like hobby with films. I would always watch films. And as soon as I heard that there was a filmmaking class, I joined as quick as I could. And, oh, actually, hi, my name is Sky, I'm a sophomore. Um, but I mean, like, this was, I mean, this class, as long with being as fun as it is, it was able to give me just like a hidden insight that media doesn't tell you about the behind the scenes with film and stuff. They tell you, like, they tell you all the funny things that happens, but she has said it's very fun. But I mean, there's like struggles that is fun to deal with and work around. And I mean, like, it's made me love film even more.
Uh, my name is Connor, I'm a senior and I had the pleasure of work editing and working with Catch closely with On The Current. And it's a, it's been a pleasure to really work on stuff that has a, has a guaranteed audience. Everyone watches it every week. And it's, it always comes out every week, so you only have to work towards it.
Yes, I write for The Courage and we do different film projects across the district, but we do focus on film too. So we have, this is our second year of the ninety second film festival. So if you, if you get a chance, go to MIHS dot TV and all of our films are there. All of the currents are there since the last year. And I, and kind of Joe mentioned it, but it's like stepping in this year, Joe's been here forever, Natalie's been here and it's, they've made me feel completely welcome. Just you know, starting off people to bounce ideas off of. And so we joke that we're building a media juggernaut. That, that's the idea. And uh, and then I mean, we've worked with a number of times at EIN as well, he's been incredibly helpful. Information shop, so just want to thank all of you as well.
I worked in radio a few years ago and you know, now being able to do this, it's been, it's, yeah, you guys are building a fire so.
Three, I mean, three, four, two, one, three, two, and one. Just the last uh, recognitions, um, National Arab American Heritage Month, National Autism Acceptance Month. Uh, Public School Volunteer Week, April twenty second to the twenty sixth. Uh, we have Passover coming up, um, and so um, wish all of our uh, friends who celebrate Passover uh, well. I know the first day is the twenty second. Um, National Administrative Professionals Day is coming up next week on the twenty fourth. National Student Leadership Week um, is coming up next week. It's a busy week. And then National School Lunch Hero Day, uh, I believe that's coming up in May. And then tomorrow, our very own Michelle Mueller's birthday is tomorrow. So those are the, sort of the updates.
Um, okay. Virtual governance process monitoring, report A. For policy twelve fifty, students on governing boards are student representative report.
As you know, to try something new, so we've added a bunch of pictures to our reports. If I got it.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, a lot of, so we've had a lot of SSA projects going on. And um, a lot of the parts are going well, like um, the elementary school has started like a tutoring program, which is kind of similar to the buddy class system. And then, yeah, a lot of other exciting things going on in the elementary school. So um, there was a fourth grade class at Lakewood Elementary that got to do like a Rue Goldberg machine thing, like energy project. And I think Mr. Rendell was there or Dr. Rendell was there. And um, also at Northwood, they had like a presentation with like, that's, that was called Skeletons and Skulls. Where like, um, a company came and like had a bunch of different, like hands-on materials that kids can like interact with. And these involve like animal skulls, which are like things that they don't have access to normally, so that was also cool.
Um, other, other social emotional learning has been going on. Um, Mercer Schools Foundation Grant brought a Living Voice presentation titled La Casa to Western Sur Elementary, fourth and fifth graders. Living Voices is a performance group that brings history to life. They come to school and give live performances while sharing film from the fan here they're representing, along with authentic documentaries and voice recordings. Um, La Casa is about migrant farm workers in the nineteen sixties fighting for civil rights and equal conditions. Um, West Mercer had a reading, readathon, the um, it included a bookmark contest, spirit days and more. They each got a reading log and seen on the screen, um, and the, yeah, and it was a, a whole log and they got to try the reading. The elementary schoolers also all got to stay at the fine art showcase. Um, the fan favorite was the one, the dark exhibit that um, was, it was like a dark room and then all the art was like glowing. And um, all the elementary schools, their art lined the hallways to high school, which was really nice.
It was less empty.
The Islander Talent Show is coming up on Thursday, May second and belonging assemblies have been happening throughout all schools. Um, the fifth grade sweatshirts have been signed and kids are wearing them all the time now, which is exciting. And yeah, it was cool.
Yeah, so at the middle school, um, we talked with Dr. Rendell, mentioned this before, but the architects were down there and they were in the comments and getting a lot of input from the students and a lot of buzz and a lot of different press. Like whether it's like useful or like, you know, everything's um, there. And then also, as you may, you guys know, at the fine art showcase, the middle school band orchestra and choir performed. And then they also, the middle school also had their spring musical last month, which was the Under the Sea and that also went really well. And the Islander Wave Policy, where like teachers can um, give students like, like not put them in a raffle, could do something good. And then kids can get a ride. That has been going on, it's, and it's been working really well. Yeah.
Moving on to the high school, the spring sports are moving closer to the postseason. Our track team is currently at Oregon Relays and over spring break, they competed in California at the Arcadia Meet. This track team has already beaten, beaten records in triple jump, the mile and two mile for boys and girls. So they're actually one of the best track teams we've seen in a long time. Our drill team competed in state at the end of March and took home second place in military and kick. Over the break, our lacrosse team went to New Jersey, New York. They played in several tournaments and visited Bassar, New Jersey Institute of Technology and Sienna College Lacrosse Programs. Our journalism, Mewbrick teams went to Kansas City over the break to compete at the national competition. And Ashley and Chris Swamy won an award in news writing. They also did in favor of my team in the picture. Um, one of our seniors, Suba, um, Suba V won a national merit scholarship. Um, we've already talked about the fine art showcase, but for the high schoolers, it was nice to be, then line the hallway. All of our visual art classes displayed their pieces, including glass art, digital art, photography, ceramics and more. The band orchestra and choir also performed and um, Director Lee informed us that our jazz band is coming in concert tonight at IMS. They're opening for the University of North Texas, one o'clock band, who is a multi-time Grammy nominated band.
And also the leadership class hosted an assembly for seniors and also um, where like a survivor of domestic violence spoke. And it was also led by two sophomores, Anusha and Maddie. And it created a lot of awareness for the seniors as they, as they prepare for college. And then um, another exciting thing is HOSA, is hosting um, a second blood drive on April twenty ninth. Since last time when Senate hosted theirs, they ran out of um, bags to store blood in. So it was like a lot of um, people willing to donate, so that's why they're hosting a second one. Um, and then, yeah, and then also our business program has been working hard. Um, and at the end of April, they're heading to ICDC, which is like their international competition. Um, and that's in Anhan, California, and I know we're sending quite a few kids this year. And yeah, the Art International Entrepreneurship Class is also hosting a Mother's Day five K on May eleven. And this will be a fun community event.
Any question?
Love the photos.
Thank you. Um, my angel mother stays on, I don't have to run. So you could volunteer. I don't think Jen has sent anything out, but I think she will. In fact, I know she will, she told me. Um, all right, next up, we have Board Policy eighteen hundred O E six, budgeting, financial planning, proposed changes to student fees.
I've got to be honest, I looked at this and I couldn't tell what the red meant. Does the red mean that's changing, meaning it's going up?
Yep, all written over in the record.
There's no key.
Yeah, correct. So they're ongoing effort to provide as much of the budget document prior to that May thirtieth budget study session. Um, this will be page sixteen within the budget document, give or take a page or two. And uh, as we build this document year to year to year, we hope to have five year kind of running totals or changes within each item. A part of this process also, I want to give uh, a great thanks to the budget service, or business services team. They've been traversing the district since February with enrollment meetings and MSOC and budgeting meetings. And then what's provided to you here is obviously the student fees that they've been holding recently. So to answer your question, yeah, the red is year to year to year, any changes that you see within student fees as they've met with the buildings or the departments. Uh, most of the fees you see before you, the changes or increases are based on kind of inflation, basically. What consumables are now costing or trips or festivals, et cetera, that prices have increased or what they believe to be estimated increases for the coming year. So like I said, this is provided within the budget documents, uh, hopefully, like I said, page sixteen, uh, for your approval at the end of June.
Question is like the, the largest one of the field trips, retreats and competitions across the board. Do we have a policy in terms of when we do and do not? Hey, as a district, for those participation fees or for the chaperones that go along? And when we look to the parents of the students to pay for it? And how is that decided of when the district may contribute a, all a proportion when the district doesn't?
There is no policy that note that we have in place. It's kind of a per entity, per organization basis throughout the district.
So, so it'd be fair to say that, I mean, there's certain competitions where the district does pay a portion. And then there's certain that we do not.
Correct. Yeah, it tends to be, you know, some of the bigger ones where, where we're going, you know, for, you know, multiple nights. I can't remember the exact, how it was exactly done, thinking about the Macy's Day Parade. Um, in terms of if you were an adult chaperone, you know, was, was there a P or not? DI is one of the ones that I work most closely with. Um, we've tried to start offsetting fees, not only because the parents who are going are, also volunteered as coaches. Um, but that also then increases the fees for everyone else, so it's always a delicate factor.
Because I know that when we get the student report update, for instance, and there's a number, I mean, just recently, just a few minutes ago, whether it's lacrosse or, you know, journalism or radio broadcast, trips going to various places. So I think it, it would just be something to put on the radar and weaken disguise in terms of perhaps a part of the study session to understand when the district does contribute and when it doesn't, and maybe to build some policy down that.
And usually, you know, when it's the contribution, I mean, it's typically the fees collected from the students then offset whatever those fees are. So it's not even the, where we kick in from the district tends to be for, if there's not money for scholarships or we need students who qualify um, for tuition assistance or whatnot, that's where it really comes in. Otherwise, a lot of these things, particularly you see the big jump on the field trips, that's really to capture some of these bigger events that happen. And we just didn't have a high enough ceiling, we felt before.
Correct. And we're trying to bring this as, as, in the open, as transparent as possible. As we have these these year after year after year, like, oh, wait, we have this fee, oh, we forgot about this fee. Well, that needs to be out there and transparent.
And particularly just because of the cost, I mean, you see five thousand is right, a lot. And not all families, I mean, I think for, for most families, I mean, that's significant. Uh, and then, you know, for some families that might not be, you know, within, you know, feasible and sort of understanding, you know, when it makes sense for the district to contribute.
And this is, this is the student fee schedule, this isn't the district contribution. So I mean, I get, I know I can speak to um, ICDC and, and the DECA competition is this, they make money year round. Or all year from the student store and those student store profits go into reducing the cost for all the students who are going to, to ICDC. So, and then I know that with the sports and with music, there's Booster Club and they do fundraisers to make every attempt to lower costs. So um, just to be clear, I mean, this is coming from students. And then I know ASB sets funds aside for scholarship that would come out of their budget as well. Is that all accurate?
And, and we never let finances get in the way of student participation. Um, that is a set practice and policy.
Right, I mean, and just, yeah, I've been working on this, the senior party and, you know, it's part of our budget that, that there's scholarship money built in. So, you know, it's, I mean, it's very advertise as much as we can. And then also the fees are based on, but based on having some idea of what, of what that needs going to be.
Yeah, no, I, I would just like to know like more in terms of sort of at a system level, for instance, in terms of what, you know, how it, how it works in terms of for people who need financial assistance for some of these, um, to make that done in the most frictionless way possible. Um, and hopefully across the board, uh, so it's not, you know, each, for each event that it becomes a mode of stress.
Yep. And we can kind of give you that update. Um, we've actually gotten a lot better at that over time where um, our, you know, Chartwells is the organization that um, really is the one where we learn the most about free and reduced lunch. And then what does that mean? And what we've tried to do then is take those lists and behind the scenes on our in-touch, we then set that it shows paid for any student who qualifies. So when they come up for ASB fees, for instance, they don't have to say, oh, you know, I call, it's our, it comes up, shows paid. Student was lying, it looks like any other student who parents have paid ahead of time, but we can go into more detail on that.
That's great to know.
That is an action, so we need to approve the new.
No, you can approve it with the budget. It'll be in the budget document.
Gotcha. Okay, any other questions? You're up to say, the question is that the parking fee is getting raised. Is that parking fee or is that um, both, the fines, the, for those illegal parkers?
But that's for.
Yeah, it's a fee, is it the parking fee, the fines?
Both have increased one to offset now staffing costs. They have to monitor the illegal parking that's going up. And then there's the increase in the fines to help deter the illegal parkers.
And the ones who get multiple fines, so we have to capture some of that too.
You can almost work off of it.
Please bring that up with your building administrator.
What'd you say?
Please bring that up with your building administrator.
Yes, they do, they do, I've seen it happening. Um, okay, uh, moving on to Board Policy eighteen hundred O E nine, communications support. Board review of district organizational chart.
This will be page hopefully fifteen within the budget, so kind of like a first order here. But this is obviously, as I stated before, anyone who picks up our budget document or looks at it online, want to give them a good idea of how uh, the operations, organization of the district function. So they have a better understanding of, of at least our specific school district, but school districts in general when we take a look at the budget where there's empty certified classified staff where they fall under building administration and then the operations side of the house.
Is, this is twenty four, twenty five, right?
Correct.
So there'll be some changes.
Yep, there will be.
Yeah, they don't probably get updated a couple of different times as we go through.
So hopefully on, you know, approval. Yeah. So hopefully on, you know, approval at the end of June and or at the May 30th, there'll be a couple more changes that will bring to your attention as we go page to page of the budget document that we did last year.
Great. Can you just, why is it dotted line on the right side to?
That's our, our contracted service.
Okay.
So we have Chartwells, which provides food service for the district. And then obviously, uh, Granny Fox is contracted for major capo projects.
Okay, thanks. Right. Oops. Um, um, next up, we have Board Policy 1800 OE 7 Financial Administration Draft Resolution. Um, number 731. Uh, this is the Reduced Education Support Program Second Reading.
So, um, obviously in March, we brought you the first reading on this. Um, you know, the number has changed a little bit since, you know, throughout the, the course of kind of the month, month of March, but nothing of significance has changed here. I'm going to have Director Battersby speak to it in a moment. Um, and just an overall reminder though, that um, I think there's two sides to this. There's the glass half-full um, side of, you know, we're hearing about reductions in some school districts um, of, you know, millions and millions of dollars, and that turns into jobs in a lot of ways. And they're reducing um, you know, many positions. We actually will have, you know, we have a couple of elementary um, postings up right now for some positions that are, were limited or whatnot and coming back. And already our candidate pool is quite deep for these. And so we're starting to see the impacts of that. Um, which then, you know, the candidate pool. So while we're not in that space, my glass half-empty is, it's never fun to go through this. It's never anything that we want to do as an organization. Um, but I'm pleased that we've been able to minimize the impact um, as much as possible. But remembering that this is the reduction enforced, this isn't the total reduction. And Director Battersby will talk about that. Um, and just a reminder on that, this is what we're reducing because there are contractual reasons that we have to go through this process. But of course, we have limited contracts that are also not necessarily being backed though. So I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, as um, uh, Superintendent Reynolds shared, this is, we're seeking RIF authority here. Um, so this is where, if we sit here today, the, this is the FTE that we believe that we have to reduce in order to align um, our staffing with enrollment. As I think Director Quillott mentioned earlier, we have made adjustments to open enrollment, which may impact this. There's many things that may uh, impact what this all that it looks like in terms of true uh, people losing their jobs. Um, and I, I say that intentionally because these are people, these are my colleagues, um, your children's teachers, these are people who have been in our community. So this is um, this is not something we want to do, um, but this is what we have to be visibly responsible and to be aligned with enrollment. And as Superintendent Reynolds shared, the reduction here is projected to be 1.5 FTE. Those are people who have a right to an ongoing contract. Um, because they are continuing. There's an additional 1.6 certificated FTE and these are all certificated staff that are people who are on limited positions, um, who will not be back though. Those are, limited positions are if someone's on leave. We are just not choosing to bring them back to replace the person on leave. So that's how you end up with a limited position. So that our limited have to um, line up the number of limited contracts with the people who are out on leave. So uh, there's an additional 1.6 there. So the overall reduction in the system is 3.1 FTE. Meaning that's how much less teacher FT we have. Um, but there's 1.5 people who have a right to ongoing contract who are anticipating to potentially not have their contract renewed next year. Um, as I said in the last meeting, this is a highly disruptive process, even if we don't end up actually needing to rip rip these people, um, because we have to deliver notice if people are bumped through our system based on seniority um, consistent with the contract. So this, this creates uncertainty for some very talented educators. Um, which may cause them to move elsewhere. So this is not something that we do lightly. And um, as we get enrollment, we will approach people as quickly as possible because we are backing up off of a May 1st, uh, it's a May 1st deadline to communicate that they are not going to be coming back. But it's also the right thing to do for us after they can get out of employment. Many of the potentially impact people have had initial conversations that this might be coming. So it's not going to be a complete surprise. Um, and I just want to um, acknowledge that all of them have been very professional, very disappointed. Um, because they do love this community and they chose this community for reason. Um, and so it's a very hard conversation conversations between administrators and staff. Um, so we're seeing reductions in English, which says math, science and CTE and publishing specifically. Um, I sort of went through all of this before, but if you have questions.
Yeah, uh, two questions. Um, what are we looking at in terms of our current FTE in terms of the numbers for staff this year? In the Delta to next year? Um, I mean, I hear what we're currently at 290 or 300 or, you know, where exactly? Uh, so when we're just looking at, you know, overall headcount, what does this translate to? And then the second is, have we identified um, any course impact that the FTE reduction uh, will have?
On the, I can start with the course impact. Um, actually that's on the docket for uh, Mr. Wald and me tomorrow. Uh, when I meet with him for my weekly meeting, um, you know, he had some preliminary things before the break, but we were really looking at the staffing. So that is top of mind tomorrow to look at what um, what the course registration we're shaking out to be. Um, so we will have that information a little bit more. Obviously, we can start to kind of see into that when we look at this, but um, you know, more at that detail, um, we'll have more of that here in the coming weeks.
And then do we know what, I mean, our current FTE is currently and then what we're targeting for next year?
Aaron, do you know what the Delta FTE is from?
We went from 87 to roughly 87 to 84 in terms of FTE at the high school. Um, that's different than headcount. I would just want to be clear because we have a different number.
Yeah, like, I mean, sort of system wide, what I was most interested in. I mean, like, just like the OSPI table of FTE for the district.
We've been most.
Yeah, that'll be part of our presentation on May 9th. Um, so we have that date upcoming. I think at the end of November, just looking at a report, um, I think that our and.
If it's in May, like.
Our certain, yeah, it's May.
Okay, then that's.
Any other questions or comments? Um, looking for a motion to uh, approve Board Policy 1800 OE 7 Resolution Number 731.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Uh, students?
Aye.
And uh, board?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, motion passes 2040. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, students?
Aye.
And board?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, 2040. Um, superintendent announcements?
Um, just, uh, just a reminder that we've got uh, our superintendent student advisory meeting coming up. Uh, so we're getting excited about that. We've got some planning um, that we're doing. Try to make it interactive when you're getting to meet with a number of different groups of students, but I know they're excited to kind of show the work they've been doing to promote belonging in their schools. Um, Asher, Ava, anything else you want to add to to that?
About belonging?
Just, as I say, just.
Oh, yeah. Um, the high school recently met with Mr. Wolf this past week and we're kind of, um, well, they're taking the ramp, they're just kind of it, but they're kind of honing in on our surveys of how we belong in. But with that, um, in that bucket of belonging, they're kind of talking about um, accommodations. And there's been a lot of like discussion between students about like how their accommodations are met and like in which way their accommodations are met, make them feel best, like if their teachers know about it or they have to tell their teachers and kind of figuring out what the best system is to make it feel like they belong inside the classroom.
So they'll be sharing some of their results from that with all of you as a school board. And I know they're, our elementary, you know, they're really jazzed.
They're really excited.
Our middle schoolers, they're a little cool, they, but they're going to be good. And then our high schoolers, I think are excited. And then we have PTA as well. And so um, I'll put a reminder in the board update, but if you have topics that you're hoping to talk to the PTA about, I think they just submitted. I saw them come through. Um, some of the topics they're interested in, but if you'll share those with um, with either Director Quillott, uh, Director Laurie or myself, then we can make sure we can get that agenda ready to go for May 2nd. And um, I think with that, um, those are the main announcements that I have.
Uh, thank you. Uh, legislative report, nothing to report in the follow-up period. Okay. Um, and now we have uh, board reports. Students, anything else?
Um, only I went to the orchestra, the senior concerto concert last week. Um, it was fantastic. The caliber of work that the orchestra is doing. I only, I mean, of course, I would go anyway to support the arts, but I'll replace the orchestra as well. Um, but the caliber of performance of these seniors are producing for these concertos. And also just the diversity of the conductors that there are the, the pieces that they're picking. And there was a Korean composer I had never heard before. It was really fantastic. Fantastic concert. And in and out of boy happiness.
Um, I attended the Mercer Island High School PAC earlier today. So there is a there are two different buckets. One was mail incoming and getting input on, you know, preliminarily like information gathering. And I would see the discussion in, in the PAC was sort of identifying a functional need and desires. And that ranged the gamut from additional storage space uh, for high school students to things we've heard about before, but improvements to the PAC, uh, the need for a black box theater. Um, to perhaps uh, more shoot for the stars, uh, such as, you know, covered stadium. Um, but all, all functional. And then also sort of a recognition that there's um, perhaps like aesthetic, uh, you know, interest as well. Uh, but then contrasting that, that it's not just the high school in isolation, uh, that once we sort of move beyond perhaps functional, um, we also have to think of other facilities within the district. And to keep that in mind. Uh, so that was one section with mail coming in and discussing, uh, you know, desires. The other was about related but separate, which was the course catalog, uh, and then open enrollment. Um, so I think the discussion for there was, you know, Principal Wolf, uh, you know, talked about that there's not a direct relationship um, between additional students and course offerings necessarily. Uh, there's questions around that. And then perhaps a follow-up for the board is to then look at open enrollment and sort of see what the impact um, on course curriculum was, you know, as we're sort of experimenting with it uh, this year. And then second, which related, but in a different era, I think, where open enrollment is more common. Um, whether we continue to do it or not, other districts are. And then what that looks like. Um, do we need to start comparing ourselves to other districts? And should that be with a lens towards competition? Uh, in competing for students? And if so, what does that look like? Um, or perhaps is it with more of a lens of being complimentary uh, with maybe for those singleton courses where we have partnerships with neighborhood high schools. Um, so I think there's certainly some work at the board level, uh, to start putting data into what, how we're going to measure uh, open enrollment and sort of what we're going to learn, um, and hope to learn after this year. And then sort of the broader question of what does this look like regionally on a go-forward basis?
Yeah.
Um, I attended PTA council meeting, I think it was before break, right?
Yep.
Um, I have no idea what we talked about. Um, it was it was before spring break. I have no idea. Um, I think it was general updates. I don't think there was anything controversial, right? Um, I do want to put, I was looking for the date and I'm not finding it. The PTA council awards on May, Friday, May 10th. Um, at the VFW hall this year. I know you'll get an e-vite at some point, everyone. The whole board does highly recommend attending if you can. It's just a super event to um, recognize a lot of our parent volunteers. Um, throughout, who will volunteer throughout the year and throughout their kids' high, uh, Mercer Island school careers. Um, I was fortunate to be able to attend the showcase before break. Um, I agree, the highlight was, well, actually, yeah, I didn't go to the Bull in the Dark Room, but the, the highlight is certainly the third gridders with their glittery bow ties. Um, they're super cute, but it was really impressive. It's, you know, I don't make it to a lot of music stuff and um, it just really, really impressive to hear the caliber. I totally agree. Um, and the excitement um, of both the, the students and the staff um, that are performing. So that was really fun to be able to do. Um, I just want to remind everyone about the Schools Foundation Breakfast on April 30th, Tuesday, April 3rd.
Yep.
Um, if you haven't signed up, please do. It's um, free to go and then a choice of whether or not to contribute. I know, I know, there's probably people there still looking for our space for, for people to sit at their tables. Um, but that should be a good showing. Um, I went oh no, this was before the last meeting. The STLA meeting was before our last meeting. So never mind on that. Um, I want to, oh, I was able to go to a um, meeting with Bob Ferguson, who's running for governor. And um, you know, it's, it's, he's making the rounds and it's all, I mean, he's, obviously his campaign is going, but but before all the policy positions come out, it's really a great way in these small groups to meet candidates, hear their positions. I got a question from, from Fred to ask specifically about the clear, you know, the, the percentage of, of public funds that are going to public education. Um, I brought up the um, the sales tax on construction and he was remarkably intrigued by it. He's like, how'd that go? And so I filled him in and, you know, he, he doesn't know the nuts and bolts, you know, of, of the education stuff. And so um, it was just a really great opportunity to be able to, you know, plant that seed. And he talked about the bond passage rate, but be able to plant the sales tax thing. It's like, you know, this really would benefit everyone and it's, it's kind of an upbringing or right. So and he seemed to agree, obviously he's got to look into it, but he's like, why didn't it pass? And I told him, why I thought it didn't pass. And and so anyways, it was, you know, those, I just wanted to say, and like anytime that you get invites to things like that, they're really beneficial to, to start these relationships. And um, he's working on his education poll, uh, education proposal, position proposal. And so um, I'm going to shoot off an email and say, you know, got questions or want my input, feel free, because they're looking for that too. And, and of course, I'm going to mention our superintendent. But um, you know, I mean, I, I we'll see, like, we'll see. Anyways, it's just, this is, this is, this is not a plug for him per se. This is the plug for the starting, the building of relationships and, and these small groups are really the way to get in, um, to be able to do those things. Um, finally, I know we're on, I'm, I'm close.
You're doing it.
Time. No, I didn't do it, but, but we're close. Um, the May 23rd meeting, we, there's, it's a, May 24th is our school day. I'm hoping that we can move our meeting to Wednesday, May 22nd. If um, if you could just check your calendars and let us know. Um, I'm sure that our students would probably appreciate that as well, as well as our staff who might be taking advantage of a long weekend, unless, or is that a staff day?
Um.
No.
Well, for us, it's a vacation day if we want to take it.
Right.
Right?
Yeah. I think you can move it. For me, I can move it. I would be um, attending by Zoom. I'll be on the road, on the water. But um, I have a Western Mercer PAC meeting from four to five that day. So I'll be attending both meetings by Zoom. So there should be any, so I can't just jump from this to the next.
All right, I have a senior board meeting, but I can skip that. Okay. Yeah. All right, we'll just double check with Christina. Um, and then notify everyone. I assume that looks free.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's it?
Just quickly, looking over to Michelle, is, are there any upcoming meetings that we might need to cover for Christina on?
Right.
I don't know when she's going to be back or whatnot. I know there's a equity advisory next week. What else is she on? Um.
We can double check.
Sure. Sure.
She's on B E I. Yeah, and in whose practice. It'd be uh in table E I.
So we have an equi, I know while she's doing that, equity advisory is next Thursday. If someone would like to attend and she can, it's the twenty fifth at three thirty. And I can put this into the my update too, if you want me to, and you can just let me know if that's easier.
Yeah, maybe in the board update.
I'll do it.
Yeah.
E I does it, it just met on April fifteen and it doesn't begin until May thirteen. I'm sorry, April fifteen, yeah.
So I'll just put that one into my board update.
Great. Okay. Um, yeah, and then just as people are aware, I just want to um put one more thing on everyone's radar as we get to the end of the year and start with uh staff recognitions and and other events, celebratory events. Um it's really meaningful what board members can attend. Um and they're usually always um nice and they're always nice and um good refreshments too. So just keep an eye out. I know, I know Fred will keep us updated in um in our, in our weekly um updates, uh but just know that you are welcome and wanted to attend if you can. Sometimes there's a lot, sometimes there's not, but 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 don't feel like it's like that you're not wanted because I I know staff especially really appreciate seeing board directors. Um, and that's it. Motion, what then? Looking to them?
Second.
All in favor, student?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two zero four zero and we are adjourned at eight.
Seven.
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 Seven.